Welcome to the meeting. I'm councillor Dedman and I'm the mayor and chairing this committee. Members and officers have their names in front of them for ease of reference. In order to assist in the process this evening, I must ask everyone to ensure that mobile phones are either switched off or on silent mode. I'll give you a minute to fumble around there, but I'm sure everyone's fine. We would be grateful if you would remain quiet while the meeting is in progress. I'd also like to remind everyone present that this meeting will be filmed by the council and broadcast live on the internet and will be capable of repeated viewing. So if you're seated in this chamber, it's possible that the cameras will capture your image. By your presence, you are deemed to consent to be filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting and/or training purposes. I think that's the end of those housekeeping notes. Can I just go straight into the meeting now? Prayers will be said by my chaplain. Thank you.
O eternal Lord God, from whom alone cometh wisdom and understanding, we beseech thee to direct to write the minds of those who are about to take counsel together on matters pertaining to the common life of this borough of Christchurch, that in all their deliberations and decisions, they may faithfully discharge the duties of their office and ever promote the health, safety and well-being of those they seek to serve, for the honour and glory of thy holy name. Amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. We can all be seated. Can I now offer to any of the gentlemen who would wish to take their jackets off, who actually have still got them on, that's quite permissible tonight, it's so hot. This is a five-minute break for jacket removal. Right, thank you. Item two on our agenda tonight, any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we've had an apology from councillor Notteg.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda, declarations of interest by members. Are there any declarations of interest to be made by members this evening? Clearly not, thank you very much, members. Item four, can we confirm as a correct record the minutes of the meeting held on the 15th of May 2018? Have I got a proposer for those minutes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, happy to propose as set out that we receive the minutes.
Thank you councillor Flag, do we have a seconder?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, happy to second.
Thank you, members. We will go straight to the vote on the acceptance of the minutes. Colin is not raising his hand. Oh, right, there's one abstention to those minutes, thank you, members. Oh, right, can we have the person who is abstaining to raise their hand, please? Oh, we see there isn't, is there? No, we've decided it's unanimous, thank you very much, it's clearly very difficult to see, everybody seems squashed in. Yes, yes, it would be very helpful as the meeting progresses if you, all of you members could actually raise your hands, as opposed to just going, you know, giving a bit of a wave, so thank you very much. That was item four, thank you. Item five, announcements. I'm going to stand up for this because I find it easier. You've got a list of engagements that I've attended on the sheets within the agenda, and everything that I've attended so far has been really, really interesting and very worthwhile, as I was hoping it would be, and it's a real pleasure to see how many volunteers give up their time to work for others in our borough. I'm only going to pick out a few of the places I've been for comment, because obviously I'm not going to go through the 21. So to start with Highcliff Food Festival, I had the honour of helping the chefs who were cooking up a storm. My part was to do a little bit of chopping and I peeled the rhubarb. I had no idea you were supposed to peel rhubarb, but obviously now I'm a top chef at Rhubarb. But can I congratulate very seriously everybody that's involved in that really good festival? It really does a credit to Highcliff. I also opened the Flower Fest, I'm hoping that everybody saw all of the flowers throughout the borough. It was a really good idea and a lot of work went into the decoration of the pieces we enjoyed. I attended the UK Unforces Day service on the 24th of June at the New Forest airfields, and as well as being able to speak on the history, because I was invited to speak because the New Forest chairman wasn't there, so I spoke on the history of our area and I was able to mention my own grandfather who flew from there in 1918, and it's a 2018, that would have been quite a thing, in 1918, so 100 years ago. And one you won't find on your sheets, because we've only just completed it, assisted by Brenda, I gave a talk to some New Zealand schoolchildren and some teachers from our twin town of Christchurch. So we showed them all the regalia, which went down very well, we found out what muskwash actually is, which was rather sad. But I took them briefly through the history of the borough, and they were very surprised indeed at how far we go back. Obviously, I went right back. And one of them said, when we were talking about one part of the history, that New Zealand wasn't even discovered till centuries later. So I think their contribution of their own history really showed to them what a long and wonderful timeline we have in Christchurch. So those are all the engagements I think that I want to mention, thank you very much. The leader of the council, do you want to make any announcements?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to confirm to members this evening that the judicial review has been set for the 30th of July, although I understand that we may not receive an answer to maybe a couple of days or so after that date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, leader. Now, the next item on our agenda is to invite the chief executive to give announcements. I will make an announcement on the behalf of the chief executive, he's not here, and obviously I think we're all aware the reason is because he is undergoing treatment after an accident. So after this meeting, I have got a card if anybody wants to sign, in fact, I'm hoping everybody will sign, with all our good wishes to the chief executive. In his place, we have Ian. Ian, do you have any announcements?
None from me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Item six, questions by members of the public. Now, we have a question, can I ask the questioners a step forward? Thank you. I know you're going to be very well looked after with the microphone and everything, Claire, so thank you very much for the question. Off you go.
Hello, my name's Claire Wade, I'm a trustee of Christchurch Soup Kitchen. At the beginning of June 2018, Christchurch Soup Kitchen raised an extremely urgent issue on social media. This was subsequently picked up by the Bournemouth Echo. Christchurch currently does not have any suitable locations where homeless people can refill bottles with clean drinking water. This was also raised with councillor Smith and Mayor Dedman via social media. An update was provided by councillor Smith on 6th of June to say that the council recognises the issue, and a suitable outdoor tap had been found under the mayor's parlor, and this would be worked upon to provide this vital human right. It has now been over a month since this issue was raised, and still no suitable source of drinking water has been provided. Temperatures during these weeks have exceeded over 30 degrees Celsius in this area. We are aware of the local scheme to provide free drinking water at various commercial premises, but the experiences of our homeless in Christchurch who have tried at these locations is they're often turned away or charged for water. We have also been made aware by the homeless people in Christchurch that they are unable to access sanitation after 6pm in the evening. This situation is an absolute disgrace in the 21st century. This is a supposedly affluent area and our hometown. This is also in danger of contravening the human right to water and sanitation, which states, "The human right to water is indispensable for leading a life in human dignity. It is a prerequisite for the realisation of other human rights. The right of everyone to sufficient, safe, accessible and physically accessible and affordable water for personal and domestic use." The UK government's own interpretation is that sanitation has to be accessible to everyone without discrimination. We at the Soup Kitchen ask the council, on behalf of those in need of these vital human rights, what urgent provision will be made to alleviate these dire issues and when exactly when will this occur?
Thank you very much, that was a very comprehensive question. I believe we have a response from the leader of the council, councillor David Flag.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thanks to Mrs Wade for her question. With regard to a water fountain, it was our plan to install a new water fountain underneath the mayor's parlor, where there is an existing water tap. The existing water tap would have been removed and replaced with a fountain. Discussion with the development management has indicated this work will need listed building consent, due to the listed building status of the mayor's parlor. To avoid the lengthy delay that this may cause, we have instead decided to install a new water fountain on the external wall of the Saxon Square toilet blocks. This does not require planning, consent, and is anticipated this work will be complete within the next few weeks. Saxon Square toilets are closed at approximately 6pm daily. This decision was taken to combat antisocial behaviour that was occurring in the toilets during the evening, which resulted in problems for our staff when trying to lock the toilets. Vandalism and drug paraphernalia being discarded within the toilets. As a result of their closure at 6pm, our staff have seen significant decline in antisocial behaviour, and I am therefore reluctant to recommend that the current decision is reversed. While there is no statutory duty to provide public toilets, this council does provide public toilets, and it is disappointing that the behaviour of a few results in the action we have taken in closing them in the early evening. The toilets are available to all until 6pm, and there are of course establishments within the town whose facilities can be accessed by members of the public later in the evening.
Thank you councillor Flag. Mrs Wade, do you have a supplementary to that question? Is there anything else you'd like to ask? Or to the answer indeed?
Oh, I understand there are facilities within public houses in Christchurch, but this again has the issue of accessing water in coffee shops. Our residents are not welcome, our homeless residents are not welcome in these premises. We are aware of complaints that have been made about the smell, because people have been using drains.
So is there a question, is really what we need?
Yeah, is it possible to at least open them till nine or 10 in the evening?
I think I'll pass that to the leader.
I think I stated in my original answer, Madam Mayor, that I would be reluctant to make a proposal to this council to extend the opening hours beyond six o'clock that we currently close. Thank you.
Right, thank you leader, thank you Mrs Wade. Right, item seven on the agenda, petitions by members of the public. We have no petitions received on this occasion. Item eight, questions by members of the council. A question has been received from councillor David Jones. Councillor Jones, would you like to put your question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question to the leader of the council is, would he comment on the first meeting of the Bournemouth, Christchurch and Cool Shadow Authority last month?
Councillor Flag.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thank councillor Jones for his question. The first meeting of the authority was held in Bournemouth University campus and was attended by all members of this council, and I believe the events of that meeting have been well documented. I would remind members that despite our strongest protest, our participation in the joint committee was used by councillor Beazley in his letter of support to the Secretary of State for the future Dorset proposal, and by Sajid Javid in his reasons for approving the future Dorset proposal, both claiming that by our participation, we were somehow supporting the proposals, which is clearly not the case. With this in mind, I advise all elected members of Christchurch Borough Council to leave the meeting. May I further remind all members that the policy of the council remains that no change from the present arrangements of local government is the best option for Christchurch, and it is disappointing that some members chose not to support the council's leadership. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, leader. Councillor Jones, do you have a supplementary to your question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would thank the leader for his answer. I'm sure the leader is aware that one Christchurch councillor has accepted office as the chairman of the new authority. Would the leader please confirm that no one has any authority to make any commitment or issue any statements on behalf of this council, other than himself and the deputy leader, and that any claims by any member or anyone else to the contrary should be completely disregarded?
Thank you councillor Jones. Leader, do you have an answer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just reconfirm what I said in my first answer, and that is that the agreed policy of this council is to oppose the future Dorset proposal. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, that's the end of the questions from councillors. Item nine, committee minutes. The minutes are within your agenda. We need a proposer and a seconder to receive the minutes of the committee meetings, this is the last cycle of the meetings, A to G. Do I have a proposer, councillor Flag? Thank you. And can I have a seconder for that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, happy to second as set out.
Right, thank you, members. Are we content to receive these minutes? It's unanimous, thank you. Very good hand raising, may I say, thank you. Thank you very much, members. Right, we have the resources committee, 30th of May, which is 9A on your sheets. Councillor Hall, you would like to propose recommendations arising from this meeting of the resources committee, which was held on the 30th of May this year. Councillor Hall?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to propose the minutes as minute number 41, but because it is an exempt item, if you need to ask questions on this, the appendices of this page from 35 to 36 are restrictive. As your members wish to discuss this in council, they're required to go into confidential sessions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hall. Do we have a seconder for this before we go into debate?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, happy to second as set out.
Thank you councillor Jameson. All right, does any member wish to speak on this minute? I can't see any hands raising, I'm going to take that as a no. Right, can we put this proposal to the vote then, please, members? All in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much, that was A on item nine. Right, we're now moving on to item 10, which I have on my list as changes to the council constitution. I understand councillor Jones would like to speak first on this item. Are members content that this would happen? Members, would you like to raise your hands to show me you are content? I think that's a majority. Thank you, members. Councillor Jones then, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may be allowed a very brief background to this, members will be aware that it is the practice of the, and the policy of this council, that changes to the constitution which affect service delivery should come to scrutiny committee first. Unfortunately, there have been a couple of instances recently where, for various reasons, this has not been the case. And unfortunately, because of the urgency with which this particular item has arisen, it is necessary to amend the constitution with effect, with almost immediate effect, and I'm advised that there will be, that there could be adverse consequences if this is not done. However, the officers presented a report which appears in your papers, and I and others do not feel that this is the most appropriate way of dealing with the matter. And after consultation, I have prepared an amendment or a replacement for the officer's recommendation. Have you circulated that, sir? I apologise for the fact that there are a couple of typos that have crept in. I apologise for the fact that there are a couple of typos that have crept in. It is not the scrutiny and oilacy committee, it is of course a scrutiny and policy overview committee. There is one chunk that was omitted after item two, which effectively carries into effect the proposals set out in your papers and it is in fact word for word for what is there. There should be another, item three, add new Q, under the proviso, under the provisos in that appendix, to assess and conclude appropriate assessments, which again is from the officer's report and recommendations.
Councillor Jones, can I just pause you there? I think you need to give the members a chance to read what you've handed out and in fact two of the members up here haven't even got it. But never mind, we will, we will carry on. Members, if you'd like to read what councillor Jones has handed out and when anybody looks up, I'll, I'll understand you've read it. Just wait, pause a moment please councillor Jameson. So then, he's proposing his amendment. Councillor Jones, can you?
Yes, I can read it.
Thank you councillor Hall, I'm sure everybody else has speed read it. Councillor Jones, can you clarify, I think I've got, what is this, assess?
If councillor Jones could, could read out again the, the further addition that's not included in the, in the, in the typescript.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologies, this was unfortunately not the way I had intended to proceed tonight, but in the light of concerns which were raised, we thought it best to take it this way rather than simply defer it and bring it back to the next meeting. So, one note, so that this council, considering the need to amend its constitution urgently to enable the council to consider applications under the Town and Country Planning Commission in principle order and considering the guidelines on competent authority coordination under the habitats regulations, notes that changes to the constitution which affect service delivery should, except in conditions of extreme urgency, be first examined by the scrutiny and policy overview committee. And I accept and I understand the chairman designate of the scrutiny and policy overview committee accepts that this is a matter of urgency. To deal with the urgent issue, amends appendix A of its constitution by amending the wording proviso A to read. A, the determination of all applications for permission or consent to carry out development or change of use, including those accompanied by or requiring a planning obligation and/or a CIL payment for planning permission, reserve matters, listed building consent, advertisement consent for notifications, prior approvals, non-material amendments, minor material amendments, lawful development certificates proposed and existing, demolition, notifications by statutory undertakers, removal or modification of planning conditions attached to an existing consent or permission, carrying out works to or the felling of trees that are subject to a tree preservation order, trees within a conservation order or trees protected by a planning condition, permission in principle and technical details. And it is those two that are extremely important because at the moment, we do not have the ability to deal with those. And then there should be a new three, add new item Q to that proviso, to assess and conclude an appropriate assessment and then also to add in the changes in red that are put before you on the document which is labelled appendix three and that is in front of you and there are the first two pages there. And that is again, apologies that it wasn't possible to include that. And then finally, because this has been done in a hurry, because, and it's not the officers' fault, the government has indulged in one of its favourite pastimes of tinkering with things without thinking what it's doing, this four refers the report prepared by the officers to the scrutiny and policy overview committee for consideration and expects a report on the effectiveness of the above changes and any further changes which may be necessary to be brought to the next ordinary meeting of council. I hope that that has caught everything that needs to be done. I do appreciate that there is one issue that the officers raised, which is the need to expedite matters because instead of an eight week period, we are now looking at a five week period. But I think there were causes for concern about the way the, it was suggested that this matter being resolved. So I'm very happy to take this as an urgent item at scrutiny on the next meeting, which is a week tonight. I know that the chairman designate of scrutiny is happy with that and I therefore propose this resolution to deal with the problem and I stress it is not a problem of the officers' making, this is one of those things that has cropped up and has had to be dealt with very quickly. I believe I have a seconder for this, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Jones, I was going to ask if you had a seconder, so yes, who is the seconder?
I believe both, thank you.
Councillor Jameson.
I urge council to support this, I believe it is very much in the spirit of what the officers wished, but I believe it deals with one major concern of members. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jones. I hope members have had a chance to digest all that. Do any members like, would, would any members like to speak councillor Smith, I'm sure you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members, I would like to thank the member for recognising the importance of recommendations A, B and C to the way that the council works. Without those authorisations, there are applications we could not legally make a decision on. So it's very important that those new, new legal statutes actually go through. As applied to the time, originally, the Town and Planning Country Act came into force on the 1st of June, the guidance was issued on the 15th of June and we had updated guidance issued to us in draft form on the 25th of June, so that explains why the time period has been so short. It's very difficult, it's very important to explain that these refer to potential applications that could happen within our heat glands, so it's very important we have the legal power to decide these. I also want to say a little bit about part D of the original recommendation, which I know is one of the points which was of great concern to members, which was that request by members for an application of these types set out in A and B to be considered directly by the planning committee, to be subject to the agreement of the chairman and or vice chairman of the planning committee. That's very similar to what, how the constitution reads already for other items and applications that are called into committee. It's very important that this is a precautionary and protective measure for members and officers whilst we adjust, adjust to this new position. It is likely that we will get applications in on this and unless we have a way of protecting ourselves, then we could have an issue. I'm quite happy with the resolution that the member has put forward and I'm quite happy to go with that, so.
Thank you councillor Smith. Any other members wish to speak? Councillor Jameson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and also thank the proposer for what I think is a very good pragmatic solution to what is an extremely urgent matter. But as he has already said, that doing things in a hurry isn't necessarily the right thing. So I think it is right and proper that the matter is considered by the scrutiny committee and then if there are any issues that we haven't thought of in, in this meeting, well it being put forward, will be brought back to full council at the next meeting. So on that basis, Madam Mayor, happy to second the proposal and give it my full support. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jameson. Councillor Bungie, you were indicating?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would have been happy to second this as well because I, I find it incredible that it's irresponsible of central government to produce these documents at such short notice, giving local authorities little or no chance of a democratic approach to, to debating them. And they, they should be condemned for doing this. This isn't the first time this has happened and we've been caught before where it's urgent, 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 we've got to push something through because of the timeframe. I was going to ask the question, how long we'd known about this, but councillor Smith has already answered that question, so I find it even more extraordinary now that we know the short timeframe that government don't consider the people that have to implement this. I do have concerns about the call-in process. We already have in place the, the fact that if a member wishes to call an item in onto the planning committee, that it has to comply with certain planning conditions. So that's already a safeguard and I think the extra addition of having to consult on top of that with the chairman or vice chairman is probably not necessary, but I'm sure scrutiny will look at that and make a decision. So I'm happy for it to go to scrutiny and be dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bungie. Councillor Smith, although I'm aware councillor Bath was first, is this in answer to something the council? Okay, thank you.
I'm wondering if in the wording of the recommendation, we ought to change part two to say, to deal with the urgent issue, amends appendix A of part three of our constitution? Because it's not actually particularly clear what we're referring to in that recommendation when you're reading through the report, so I think possibly we ought to change that and make it more clear where we're, what we are referring to.
Well, before you get up councillor Jones, can I, can I throw it to the officers? Is that going to?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would be concerned of my seconder, I am happy to accept that.
Is the seconder content? Right, thank you councillor Smith. Now we're moving on to councillor Bath. Thank you councillor Bath.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure if I'm the only one, but I'm finding this rather confusing and I just wondered if our legal team and our head of planning could just give us an overview on the implications of this changed draft resolution and if there is any legal implications or anything that we should be aware of before we agree to the draft resolution.
Well, I'm going to ask whichever officer wants to stand up and answer, councillor Bath? Thank you. Mrs Lynch.
Thank you. The, the amended resolution as it stands gives us the authority that we need to determine any of these applications should they come in, so yes, absolutely fine with those as well. But just to clarify, it is everything in appendix three on pages one and two and three and four that, that we are looking for. The one that is being excluded is, is on the fifth page. So the, the authority to deal with these applications is twofold. It's the first bit which gives the authority to the planning committee and to nominated officers and then the second bit that councillor Jones has read out, so those two bits are interlinked. So just to be clear on that, that would then give this authority, the ability to determine these applications should we receive any.
Thank you very much.
Yes councillor Bath, you're content with that? Are any more members indicating they wish to speak? Right, I think that answer is no. Well, we have a proposer and a seconder. Councillor Jones, do you want to wind up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very briefly, dealing with three points that have been raised. It is not normal for a call-in to need the consent of the chairman or vice chairman. It is a, one of the rights of members, that as I understand it, is a safeguard that enables a member to have an application discussed and decided in public and not decided behind closed doors. Secondly, the question of scrutiny and I thank councillor Jameson for his information and his clarification on that point. Scrutiny is there specifically to ask the questions. This should have come to scrutiny, there was a scrutiny meeting not all that long ago. It would have been possible for the acting chairman or the chairman designate to have been consulted about this, we wouldn't. Now, that's a breakdown in procedure, I'm sure it will be amended in future. And finally, Madam Mayor, the question of confusion. I am sorry, as I have explained to members, that it is difficult to deal with this in the timeframe available. I hope that this has been presented so that members actually can see what they are dealing with, which in many ways is actually a lot shorter than five pages when you look at it on a printed page, A4, it comes out.
Yes, councillor Jones, can you truncate some of this speech? That's it, thank you very much.
I was just going to say, the three points that I wish to deal with that have been raised, thank you very much.
Right, members, I think we have had a full and frank discussion on that. I'm going to put this proposal to the vote. All those members in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much, members. And thank you officers as well for your input on this. That was item 10, moving on to item 11. This is the play project and I'm going to invite the leader councillor Flag to present this report to us. Councillor Flag.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members, the council currently owns and manages 30 play areas and it further inspects and provides minor maintenance for two play areas which are owned by Burton and Huron Parish councils. Recent budgets have only allowed for relatively minor improvements on average to one site per annum, with the sites at Christchurch Quay, the Splash Park and Barrick Road having more recently been refurbished. Officers were asked to investigate the possibility of providing an improved play provision across the borough. The item before you this evening provides an enhanced play project by reallocating funds from the already agreed capital funding programme and revenue reserves as, as set out at appendix one. The play project proposal aims to improve the play offer across the borough by reducing the maintenance and inspection of small poorly used sites and improve the play value of the main sites across the borough. A recent report identified a number of poorly used sites, often with old and tired equipment. Many of those sites are currently closed due to poor conditions or for safety reasons. It is proposed that these poorly used sites, as set out in appendix two, are decommissioned and equipment at the existing larger venues be improved to provide an enhanced play provision. Further detail of the project outcomes are to be found at appendix three and I would like to formally propose a recommendation as set out and I understand that the deputy leader is happy to second the proposal. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Right, thank you leader. Councillor Jameson, are you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm very happy to second this proposal. We did have discussions on this, the idea that we want to leave a legacy should we be dissolved in the near future. Hopefully we'll leave a legacy even though we're not going to be dissolved. But this was the idea, and it was, the whole project was to have decent play areas in practically every ward in the, in Christchurch. Unfortunately, one ward hasn't got any. But I'm very happy to second it and I trust that everybody will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jameson. Members, who would like to speak on this item? Councillor Darren Wilkes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I heard about this project and the principle that was involved, I was very happy to think that we as councillors were going to be leaving a legacy for the young people of Christchurch right across our borough. When I read the report, though, Madam Mayor, I was very, very disappointed to see that the ward that councillor Negeary and myself represent, North Highcliff and Walkford, is completely left out of this. This, I thought, was going to be something that would cover the whole of the borough. And North Highcliff and Walkford are part of the borough of Christchurch. At this moment, we have one very inadequate play facility within the borough, sorry, within our ward. I and councillor Negeary happily admit that the very small, underused facility tucked away behind other houses is not suitable. And we do not object to that being removed. At the time it was put in, it was right for the estate it was on in that there were a lot of small children. Yes, there are still some small children in that ward, but they do not use the facility because they're not close enough to it. We do have a lot of children within our ward. In fact, young people of all ages, there are a very great deal of young children. They're not concentrated in one area. This used to happen many, many years ago, but they are spread across the whole of the ward. My fellow councillor and I have been to the officers and have explained to them how disappointed we are yet again. They have looked into the matter, I know, and I respect them and the other officers over the years who have come back and said, we can't do it. We haven't got the sort of money that we'd be involved to do the sorts of things you and councillor Negeary have suggested. And there is nowhere else within the area of North Highcliff and Walkford to have a play area. Nevertheless, I'm very, very disappointed that yet again, the one thing that in all the years I've been a councillor in that area, I have been repeatedly asked for is a play area. It's the parents asked for it and the children alike. We've had petitions over the years asking for it. We've had requests all the time, but still, our ward is going to be left without anything whatsoever. So, Madam Mayor, for that reason, I'm very disappointed to be where we are. I won't try and block this in any way, but I won't feel that I can support it. So I will be abstaining on behalf of all the young peoples within our ward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Darren Wilkes. Councillor Bungie, you were indicating?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too have my concerns that this never went again to committee. And I recognise there is an urgency to this as we want to put things in place prior to May 2019 if the worst should happen. But we had a presentation by officers in this chamber, which not all members attended or could attend, and members hadn't therefore been given the opportunity to come to a committee and make representations for their wards. So that, I think, is very regrettable. We've heard about the lack of use on some of the play areas and their being decommissioned. But one has to wonder whether the lack of use is because of the state of the equipment or in fact the lack of equipment that is in those play areas. Now, I can go back many years when I was chairman, and this council on community services had a regular yearly budget for improving and maintenance of play areas. That disappeared. The other thing that concerns me is it's mentioned that £1,000 a year be allocated to each of the play areas for maintenance, where there ain't no way that the Splash Park and the play area there can be maintained for £1,000 a year. And if we're talking about transferring them possibly to town or parish councils, should they be taken up by the local people, that will be nowhere near sufficient. So I think this whole thing needs to be thought out again. I need, I agree, we need to process this quickly, but let's not get it wrong for the sake of speed. We heard with the planning that speed is not always the best way forward. We need to get this right because as has been said, this is for the future generations if we're not here as a borough in a year's time. So we need to get it right. And I would like to see the process start, but it come back to committee for members to be able to discuss whether some of the proposed decommissions could in actual fact be improved to make them more usable and more acceptable. Because in some areas, as we've heard, Walkford and Highcliff, there will be nothing. And you can't expect children to walk several miles to a play area, sometimes because of the roads, it's not always safe. Some of the play areas can be regarded, shall we say, very parochial by their users, and people from other areas of the borough that may come along to use them are not regarded in a friendly way because this is our play area. And you can understand it, the kids can be proud of their play areas, and it becomes, as I say, a parochial thing. So I think we need to think this through properly, start the process by all means because we need to get it in place. But let's have further discussions and debate without it going carte blanche through tonight. So let's start the process, but I'd like it to come back to committee for debate and discussion of all members before we make final decisions. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Negeary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would concur with the passionate statement made by my fellow, my fellow councillor on the issue that we're discussing at the present moment. Some years ago, we did establish a piece of land in North Highcliff and Walkford which would have been suitable for a new play area, but it needs developing, it needs money, and we keep being told that we haven't got any money to support young people in North Highcliff. And I find that disturbing, really. I would like to support my fellow councillor in abstaining from the vote, not against the principle, but against what we're not getting in North Highcliff and Walkford. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Negeary. Can you pop your microphone off, please? Councillor Negeary, microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernard.
Councillor Phipps, I think you were next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think this is an absolutely great for a wide initiative. I am sorry that there's a one ward that does appear to be excluded, but I think officers have looked at that, and I'm sure they will continue to do so. But I think we've got to look at this whole thing in the round. It's absolutely clear that there are many current sites, play sites across this borough that are in a very poor state of repair. And this project will revitalise play for children across Christchurch. There will be improved facilities and new facilities, bigger and better. This is all good news, it's got to be good news. I've heard the comments that have been made about the proposal to hand the new play areas or refurbished ones to parishes should they come into being, and the money proposed for maintenance. I do have some experience of this because in Huron, we own and manage the play areas. And it is, it is not easy, you have to deal with this. And that is why a parish raises a precept. And you will be given some money, or parishes will be given some money at the start, not Huron-Burton because they already have play areas in existence, but the new parishes will be given some money at the start, which they can ring-fence for maintenance. Then it is up to them to decide how much of their precept they then want to ring-fence or put aside each year. And it becomes a community issue and it becomes a community responsibility. And that's what it's all about, the community. I think we really must take this forward tonight.
Yeah.
It's very important, it's a good, big project, and it can only be of benefit to the majority of this borough. And I am delighted to support the recommendation and this project.
Thank you councillor Phipps. Councillor Smith, I think is next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree, I think this project is absolutely brilliant. I'm really looking forward to it coming through. In Portfield, we only have one play area. It is going to be refurbished, but in an area with two schools, one junior, one infant school, lots of play groups, lots of young families, our play area is actually aimed at older children. So we don't have something for the young ones, the ones that won't walk so far. I do wonder after hearing a couple of my colleagues speak whether there is a process by which we could look at this again, maybe through scrutiny, whilst we are continuing with the process, that maybe we could look at it and see if there are any ways where we could change it.
Councillor Colin Jameson?
Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I also think this is an excellent proposal. I think it brings into play more effective facilities for the benefit of the community, with the exception of North Highcliff and Walkford. And I would agree with the other speakers whilst I support the principle of what we're doing, and I think the principle is right, we should move it forward. But I think that we, if we deny, if we deliberately deny a ward from having effective play facilities, then actually the whole scheme is not fit for purpose. So we do need to do this, and we need to do it whilst the whole, the whole scheme is being rolled out so that at an appropriate time, money will be found, can be found, and the, the processes can be put in place to ensure that everybody, every ward within the borough has an effective play facility or play facilities for their own community. Thank you.
Councillor Davis, you were indicating earlier?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Personally, I think it's a very good report prepared by the officers and should be taken on board straight away. It is upsetting for my colleagues from Walkford and Highcliff, but as far as my wards are concerned, I'm more than happy. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Davis. We always like happy councillors, don't we? Councillor Loughs, I think you're next, and then somebody down the chair.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I merely wish to remind people that the Highcliff Ward and North Highcliff and Walkford, when I started, certainly one and a bit years ago, was one ward. And it got separated probably 20-odd years ago, can't remember exactly. And the facilities are still the same, but the facilities that are in the Highcliff Ward are still there. There is, there has been no real change, except the little bit on, in the Gordon Road play area in the corner, which I believe was altered some years ago. I would prefer if this comes to another committee, that members from an adjoining ward were given the opportunity to attend at the other committee, and that this matter, if it's decided at that committee, should come back to this full council with the expectation that perhaps somebody in the surrounding wards would wish to be able to address it at this council. I can imagine that this meets with not a lot of approval by many people who are not directly involved, but this full council is responsible, not individual wards. Thank you.
I have councillor David Jones next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I too wish to support this proposal. I think it's an open secret that I'm not the only Mancunian in this council. And if I say bogatoe cluff, I think somebody else might conceivably know what I mean. An open play area, so important. When we were young, and admittedly it's a long time ago, but when we were young, we went out, we played, we learnt about play, we learnt about socialising, we learnt about physical activity. All right, we came home with straight knees and bashed elbows and other things. Sometimes they were accidental, sometimes otherwise, but we played, and it was socialising and it was healthy, and it was so important in the development of young people. Play is important and it is essential. And I am so pleased that we are looking at leaving a legacy. Now, I agree that there are gaps in the plan, and again, it's something that we really are up against time on this one. But it has been suggested, and I'm quite happily named councillor Smith, that this be taken forward and possibly by scrutiny. I would suggest that the member who is on scrutiny bring a single, single member item to our next meeting, and I'm quite sure whichever one of myself or councillor Jameson is actually sitting chairing at that point will be happy to take that as an item. And that we can then look forward as to ways we can bring everybody together, bring everybody in, and monitor this project, and more importantly, make sure that it goes fast. Because, members, if it isn't done by the 31st of March 2019, it's not going to be done. Let's get it done, and I urge members to support this.
Thank you councillor Jones. I think monitoring is a good idea. Now, we do have, we had councillor Bath who wants to speak, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has said because I think it goes without saying that everyone's in support of this, it's a very good suggestion. Our officers... Our officers have worked jolly hard and I think we should congratulate them on putting together this paper at such short notice for the benefit of our young people in the borough. And we are trying to encourage more people with young families to either stay in the, in the borough or to move to the borough. And I think this will be fantastic for our young families. I do think it's a great shame that North Highcliff and Walkford have been excluded from this. And I would propose that we put an additional recommendation E, that officers look again at providing play facilities if there isn't one ward that is excluded. But I'm happy to support it and propose that as an additional recommendation.
Councillor Barth, you've put a proposal, is there a second for that around the table? Right, councillor Hallam, you're indicating, you're indicating that you would second it. Right, so this is, sorry? Right, we need to abate this amendment. Now, councillor Smith, you were indicating, are you indicating on the amendment? Right. We have an amendment before us. Councillor Barth, would you like to actually clarify what it is you're, you're saying, if you've got it written out?
Well, the words that I quickly scribbled down were, 'Officers look again at providing play facilities in North Highcliff and Walkford Ward'.
Oh, thank you. Councillor said that according to my list would be E, is that right? Right. Councillor Loft, are you talking to the amendment, speaking to the amendment?
Yes, Madam Chairman. It may be a repeat of what I said earlier, but I can't remember exactly what I said before. If I make it absolutely plain now, I would not be happy to see any changes made within the present ward structures, which took something away from one of the other present wards. I can remember, and so can councillor Bungie, because his memory is better than mine nowadays, that that, we had a, what was a three-member ward thirty-odd years ago.
Yes, councillor Loft, is this relevant to the amendment that councillor Barth has put?
It's adding to it. If you want a, a proposal for an addition to it, I would say that it, you don't want an addition to it.
We, we can't change it once it's been tabled, councillor Loft, as you know. But you're speaking to the amendment as it is.
I'm speaking to the amendment, which is on the prime matter and will be tapped to it. I'm trying to point out that it is making proposals solely for the West Highcliff and Walkford Ward, which have effect on adjoining ward. And therefore, if the matter is going ahead, the adjoining ward should be part of what is discussed somewhere or another.
Thank you councillor Loft. Councillor David Jones is next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just avoiding being the very first person to donate £10 towards your fund. I totally sympathise with the reasoning behind this amendment. But I feel that it was the general consensus that this should be looked at and we, I think just about agreed that it would come to scrutiny next week. And there would be ample opportunity there to bring concerns and suggestions like this, which is a very valid point. I would hope that on the, on the understanding, which I would like to give, that this is going to be looked at by scrutiny, that that point about the geographic distribution of the resources given will be examined and will be looked at. But the thing is, we've got to get this going. And I would hope, I don't, I would hope that the proposal would be withdrawn, as I said, under the understanding that scrutiny is going to be looking at this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Phipps, you were speaking to the amendment here.
Yes, this is, this is to the amendment. I've got great concerns that this amendment will cause a delay. We can't have a delay or this isn't going to happen, that's as I see it. It's also my understanding that officers have looked already, have spoken with councillors in Walkford and Highcliff Walkford, and have been there and have looked at this. And I just wonder whether it is appropriate, and I'll take your views on this, as to whether the officer would perhaps explain on, on what has happened with, with that, that ward. But I don't know if that's, that's allowed. But as far as I'm concerned, we should not delay this. And if we could take this forward, if it goes to scrutiny, fine. But we should not delay it by saying they've got to look again and delay everything else. I'm sorry, but I can't agree with that.
Councillor Jameson, I'm calling you to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm speaking to the amendment that was put forward by councillor Barth. And in her initial presentation, she did, she did suggest that extra funding would be found to implement any work done in, in Walkford and North Highcliff. That, to me, would indicate that there wouldn't be a delay in the substantive proposal because that is already funded and costed. But it would allow us to bring in perhaps an effective play area for, for the ward. And it could be perhaps appended to the, the initial proposal. So I'm, I'm going to support the amendment. But I just wondered if councillor Barth wanted to sort of reflect on the funding issue of, of her proposal.
Thank you councillor Jameson. Could you turn off your microphone? Thank you. Councillor Darren Wilkes, you want to come back on the amendment?
I wish to speak on the amendment, thank you, Madam Mayor. Not come back, I haven't spoken on the amendment yet. Madam Mayor, as I listened carefully to what my fellow councillor next to me said and understood what she said, she did not mention delaying the initial project at all. She asked that this addition, as I see it, to the recommendation is to be added and that they would, we would look at funding from elsewhere, further funding, not the funding we have set out in this document. If that is the case, and I'm sure it is, I still stand by everything I said earlier about abstaining. But for this discussion, speaking to an amendment as it's put, I will happily vote for it. Because I would like the whole of the borough to be covered by this. I'm not trying to delay anything as far as the rest of the borough is concerned. I just want our part of the borough to be looked at and money spent on it. We have spent years trying to achieve something. In fact, all the time I have been a councillor there, and that is many, many years. So please, members, support what my fellow councillor here has said. And vote for the whole of the borough to be part of this, not just part of the borough. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Darren Wilkes. Councillor Spittle, you were indicating.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am also speaking in support of the amendment and wholly agree with what has been said by those who are also supporting. This is meant to be a legacy. How on earth are we going to be able to look at all our residents in the face and say, yes, we've looked at the whole borough, knowing full well there is one ward that is, has got no play facilities? They've still, they've obviously got children there, they've obviously got a mix of ages, et cetera. But every child matters in this borough, particularly children of, of North Highcliff and Walkford Ward. It's all very well for those members who have got play facilities, adequate play facilities, to say, fine, let's just go with it. But no, we are representing the whole borough and therefore we should include a facility to investigate further what can be put into North Highcliff and Walkford Ward. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you councillor Spittle. Councillor Barth, I've got you. I'm sorry councillor Jones, what are you saying? Sorry. Councillor Barth, do you want to come back or is this, we're not summing up?
If I could just come back, I think possibly to clarify what I said in my speech and to make it a little bit clearer in the further recommendation E, to change the wording slightly to reflect what I meant, which is, 'Officers look at additional funding from our unallocated reserves to provide play facilities in North Highcliff and Walkford Ward'.
Thank you councillor Barth. Councillor Bungie, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I spoke right at the beginning, I made it quite clear that we must not have any delay in starting this process. But what I did say was that a committee should be involved so that members that hadn't had any input could bring forward concerns like North Highcliff and Walkford. But before we vote on the amendment, I would like to hear from the officers if, following the councillor's recommendation, that we look for alternative sources of finance to, for a play area in the Walkford area. Should that be appropriate and should there be the land for it, will that cause any delay? If it's not going to cause any delay, I'm happy to support it. If it's going to cause delay, I cannot support it because we have to start this now.
I'm going to call, I'm going to call the officer to speak at the end of this debate. So councillor Davis, oh, not councillor Davis. Okay then, councillor Jameson, councillor Mrs Jameson, are you indicating?
Thank you, Miss, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this, this is going on and on. When we had this committee, joint committee, whatever we called it, task and finish group, we know the officers went around the whole of the borough and looked at all of the play areas that are, that are at the present. And I know that they'd looked in West, North Highcliff and Walkford, but were unable to find a suitable place. I would like to stick with the original proposal and, but, yes, let them talk, talk to the officers. And, and I think if there is any possibility, I'm sure the officers will work with the councillors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, councillor Hallam, do you wish to speak as you seconded the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was very happy to support the, the recommendation of the addition of point E. I think it is important that we look at the legacy for the whole of the borough. I don't believe that councillor Barth proposed to delay what was already set out on the table. We're just looking to expand that and for full inclusion. I also note as well that within the recommendations that we're looking to talk to the schoolchildren and schools and get their ideas for the areas of what they would like to see in their playparks. And I think it would be very difficult to single out North Highcliff and Walkford and say that they can't have one. So on that basis, I am more than happy to second the proposal that's actually on the table.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hallam. Now, I'm going to ask Mrs Plumley if she would like to clarify, we're talking still, Judith, to the amendment, if you could. Do you want the amendment read back out again? It's okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is a £1.2 million project. It's a massive procurement exercise for us and we've got less than eight months to do it. We'll need to let three contracts to facilitate this. And so it is a massive piece of work and we need to start now. As councillor Darren Wilkes is aware, we have looked at sites, we've been looking at sites in North Highcliff and Walkford for many, many years, with the help and that of councillor Geary. And we have, they recently identified a site that we have looked at, but it would be a brand-new site. And if we're going to introduce a new play area in a new location, we would need to go through a consultation process, involve the local neighbours because they may or may not want children playing next door. The site in question has, is currently very overgrown and, you know, could be argued is a wildlife habitat. So there would have to be research done into the destruction of that habitat. So it's not a question of money in this, in that particular case. It's a question of how long that would take to deliver and whether in fact we could deliver that site at the end of, of the, of the process anyway, with the support of the local residents. There are facilities in Highcliff at, at Lymington Road, which are excellent facilities and are going to be enhanced by this piece of work. And whilst it is regrettable that there, there isn't something in every single ward, there are certainly play, good quality play facilities in each area of the borough. And this project seeks to create those good quality locations, which will enhance the play offer and make them somewhere that people do want to go to rather than leave them neglected as they are at present.
Thank you, Mrs Plumley. Now, I think members have all taken in what the officer has told us. We are now going to the vote, I think, on the amendment. So those in favour of the amendment, please show. Those against? You counted us? So I believe that amendment falls. The amendment has been lost. We go back to the main recommendation. I still have speakers wishing to speak on the main recommendation. Councillor Neil, you were indicating some while ago, thank you.
I was, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I was, I was a little bit concerned when I first saw this report. I'm not here to try and delay anything. And I, I just have a concern that we're closing three, and I'll say it again, out of five. We do have a large ward with lots of children and we have a school and we have two large major roads, the busiest in Dorset, that run either side of our ward. And so it's not always easy for children to get across those roads. So the reason we've got those, some of them are very small, some of them are not used, and it's because of the equipment and the state of the equipment. I see the logic in it, but most of the ones that are closed, the three that are being closed, are all within our social housing areas. And I feel that that might be slightly wrong. I have been a member here for nearly 12 years and have never been asked about the play equipment. And it may be because I'm an independent and that I wasn't involved in the committee. But I never heard about this until the other night when the briefing was mentioned. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend that meeting due to a death in my family. And I, I did talk to the officers and very kindly sent me the slides. But I still have concern that members have not, none, neither member has actually been spoken to about this. And I really do feel that it should go to scrutiny so that there is a chance that we can actually tweak... so that there is a chance that we can actually tweak it a little bit without costing any time.
I've got councillor Smith down. We're talking now on the main body of the recommendations, councillor Smith. I think you were named, this is why you're having a go.
I was named and I just wanted to assure members that it will be going to scrutiny as a single member item on the 17th of July.
Councillor Hilliard, you were indicating?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm supportive of the project. The strategic director went through the reallocation of the budgets comprehensively at our briefing and it's detailed in appendix whatever. And I don't think we're missing out on any funding going elsewhere. So I think it's properly funded. I would say that, I would request that any decommissioning of sites occurs after new ones have been built. We use, well, we used to use the five on Hoveburn Estate with our family and friends. And two have already closed. And I would hope that the other three remain open until a new one is built. And like councillor Hallam, I am pleased that there is a consultation with youngsters to get their input. Whilst it's not input on the actual site allocation, it will be on what the play facilities are. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hilliard. Councillor Hallam, as councillor Hilliard named you, would you like to reply to councillor Hilliard or are you content not to?
I'm pretty content, to be honest.
Thank you, councillor Hallam. I don't know if there is any more debate around the table. I think we've had a very good discussion on that. Councillor Flag, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to confirm that the chairman of resources, the chairman of community and the chairman of scrutiny will recall that I spoke to them personally with regard, with regarding bringing this item to full council as opposed to going through those committees purely because of the time constraints that we have, the pressures that are on officers to put this together in awarding contracts. I've been assured that providing this goes through this evening, the item will be brought back on a regular basis to the community committee for the members of that committee to understand where the project will be at that time. So it's not a case of we didn't go to the committees because that's the policy of the council. The reason we are here discussing it tonight is because of the time constraints. And I would ask members to please support this so we can move on and that officers can get the contracts underway. And I'm sure that officers will do everything they can to bring reports back to us so we're fully aware of what's going on. Thank you, members.
Thank you, leader. Members, we're going to put this to the vote. Can I have all in favour? Anybody against? And any abstentions? That's councillors. Right, thank you very much, that is carried. I'd like to thank the officers myself, that is very good. Okay, so we've done the play project. Thank you for a very, very good discussion on that. Agenda item 12. This is the corporate plan. Can I ask councillor Flag to present? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Information is set out in the enclosed report and I'm happy to propose that members note the progress. And if there are any issues that members wish to ask, I'm sure that we can try and provide those answers here in the seats. Thank you.
Do we have a second for that proposal? Thank you.
I'm very happy to second Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Jameson. Does any member wish to speak on this item? I think councillor Smith was first, then it will be councillor.
I also have a question. I merely because of local news coverage and national news coverage, I'm wondering if we have anyone who could comment on the affordable housing and the fact that it's showed at Klein recently.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Mr Barnes, would you like to comment on that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think councillor Smith raises a very pertinent question. I think in terms of the delivery of affordable housing, I think as set out in the report, two real reasons why we're a little bit constrained at the moment is, first of all, members will be aware that we don't have very many large sites in the borough. And there's one site in particular that would provide considerable numbers of affordable houses. That site has gone through outline planning permission. At the moment, there are still items to resolve in terms of the section 106, the legal agreements between the developer and the landowner. As soon as that has been sorted, we would hopefully get a full application coming through and we can process it. I think the other reason, again, whilst we suffer in this borough is because most of the other types of development are very small developments of 10 houses or less. And that being the trigger point for provision of onsite affordable housing. So because we've got so many sites that are 10 or less, we don't get any onsite provision. And obviously, that's a problem for us. And it's a little bit insurmountable because as members will be aware, we do have a shortage of land. In terms of what we're trying to do about it, obviously, we do have some money in the capital fund, about a million pounds, for housing enabling and temporary housing. And members will again see in the report that we recently had some work commissioned by the local government association to help us understand how best to spend that money. Because when you're talking about the provision of affordable housing, a million pounds doesn't go very far. And in consideration of the last item, I probably shouldn't say this, Madam Mayor, I look very jealously on the fact that it was a million pounds spent on play. But that's obviously a decision that members have made. I would like to spend it on housing. So apologies if I spoke slightly out of turn, Madam Mayor, but hopefully that gives councillor Smith her answer.
Thank you, Mr Barnes. I'm sure you could never speak out of turn. Any member wishing to speak? Councillor Spittle, were you indicating? Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry, councillor Jameson, yes, your question. Oh, right. Sorry, councillor Spittle, councillor Jameson was first. No, councillor Jameson. He's not giving way to you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. I'm slightly confused. Are we not having a corporate plan which is separate from East Dorset? If so, should we be removing references to East Dorset from the document that we have before us? Or have I got that wrong?
I'll have to ask the officer to reply.
Through you. Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. Clearly, the corporate plan has been in existence for many years and it has been reflective of the actual partnership with East Dorset. So we do actually reflect both councils in that corporate plan.
Councillor Spittle.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Continuing the theme of affordable housing and in particular on page 98, the annual increase of the number of temporary accommodation. When I held the post of portfolio holder, I was aware that there was a temporary accommodation on the horizon. There are already hostels over at East Dorset, but nothing except for one in particular, which is always fully occupied in Christchurch. And so I'm quite disappointed and wondered why the property that was identified by the officers never came to fruition. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Spittle. Can I ask Mr Barnes to come back on that?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. I share councillor Spittle's disappointment. We did do a lot of due diligence work in terms of trying to procure a property. And we made an offer for that property. And at the moment, the valuation that we've had done as a council doesn't get anywhere near the valuation of the vendor. So we're in a bit of an impasse situation. We are hopeful that the individual concerned, the owner, will change their mind. But I can't give any assurance on that. And just to give a bit of reassurance to members is that obviously if we were to go green terms, this would have to come back to the appropriate committee for member approval. But we're still working hard and trying to recruit other temporary accommodation either through using our capital resources or by negotiation with people who want to lease properties for temporary housing use.
Thank you, Mr Barnes. I have councillor Barth. Is this a question or are you, debate? Well done, thank you. Are there any more questions? Oh, no, of course councillor Davis, thank you. Sorry, councillor Barth. Oh, councillor, no, I'm sorry, councillor Barth. Councillor Bungie has a question, I believe. So if you can give way to him.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It really follows previous councillors' comments. And I do wonder about the relevance of this joint East Dorset and Christchurch plan going through to 2020. As in the last 12 months, many of East Dorset councillors have been trying to distance themselves from Christchurch as much as they can.
Do we have a question, councillor Bungie?
On 32, it says officers will discuss priorities with portfolio holders. We don't have portfolio holders. Who do they discuss with here? Thank you.
This is a question to Mr Barnes, is it? Or justice?
Every officer wishes to take it, Madam Mayor.
I don't know if Mr Barnes does wish to come back or whether that's self-explanatory.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think there are two things here. Members will be aware that we've actually decoupled the local plan. And there are very straightforward reasons for that. In terms of the corporate plan, the corporate plan was a joint document, as Mr Miller has said, which was put together by both councils four years ago. We're almost through that period. And a lot of the delivery of that plan has been done by a joint officer team. And those joint priorities, it's difficult to separate them out at this stage. Members, if they so wish, could ask for a report on the process for that decoupling. But I would suggest where we are at the moment in terms of local government reorganisation, that would be sort of wasted effort. We've got an awful lot of work to do to try and deal with the priorities that members want to deliver at the moment, such as the play project. So actually delving into the reasons why we need or don't need a separate corporate plan, to me, would be a waste of time. I'm sorry if that's a straightforward answer, but that's the way it is.
Thank you, Mr Barnes. I think I'd like to note that it is, we're supposed to be noting the progress against the Christchurch and East Dorset corporate plan. So I think that was self-explanatory on your paper. Councillor Barth, you're opening the debate now.
If I may, thank you. There's been lots of questions and issues about the aspects of the report that might seem slightly less favourable. But I want to concentrate on the things that are looking very favourable. And I think we owe a huge congratulations to our officers on the amount of work that they've been putting in to all of these areas under very, very difficult circumstances to achieve things like national recognition. In September, they were the winners of the CIPD award for Best Change Management Initiative. And that's an amazing award to have achieved because the competition for that is not just public sector. It's also private businesses throughout the country. So I think that's fantastic and we should pat ourselves on the back that we have achieved that. Speaking personally, having been very much involved in the setup of the growth plan, I'm really pleased to see that growth in economy is looking absolutely brilliant. All the arrows are green, they're all pointing upwards. We've got increased employment, we've got increased average wage, we've got increased number of businesses who are active and positive recognition by support organisations and the local enterprise. So I think we need to recognise that despite some shortcomings on things that are very hard to manage in difficult circumstances, we have achieved an awful lot and we're continuing to achieve. And I think we should congratulate the officers on making that happen for us along the goals that we have set and worked alongside with them. So I want to say thank you to them for that.
Thank you, councillor Barth. Councillor, Mr Jones, you're indicating?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I think we should be very pleased with this, that it is a success story. It shows what a small borough, which knows what its residents want, what has a dedicated team of officers and is prepared to innovate, but above all, and I won't mention any neighbouring authority, but to be prudent with its finances, can achieve. I think, and nobody else I think is going to say it, but this is, if we're looking at the last 12 months, it's also a success story for the leader and the deputy leader, for the committee chairman of resources and community, because they have worked to give this borough the leadership, the collegiate leadership, which has enabled this success story. So I think I would second the previous speaker's generous remarks about the achievements in the last 12 months. And I would like to add my own congratulations to all those who have delivered this excellent year's report. I used to say that, now I was teaching.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Is there any more debate? I'm going to ask councillor Flag if he wishes to sum up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would totally agree with what's been said. And members, if they look at the report, they will see who is actually responsible for what issues are on the report. And just to say that councillor Darren Wilks is on the report because it covers the period that councillor Darren Wilks was actually chairman of the committee. So that will change as we go forward to councillor Fips. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, leader. We're going to put this proposal to the vote. Can I have indications of all in favour? Thank you, members, I think that's unanimous. Right, that was item 12. There being no other business, I'm happy to close the meeting. Thank you, members.
All rise, please.